We'll get going here after 5:45. This is our time to do the work session. Our regular council meeting will begin at 6:30. I know we're thin on staff, but a lot of things going on this time of year. We've got, it looks like Ford Department is here and James is the fifth. We'll hear from Chiefs, start with Sean.
I really don't have anything. I'm sure that Chief Heitz has some details for you about our incident earlier.
Chief?
Let's throw me under the bus. Now, there is, I wanted to ask Stacy's here, but Kelly too. I have a question or concern about our officers working 12 hours and they get eight hours of sick leave they earn. I understand that, but I've got one particular officer who's in the Army Reserve, or maybe Marine Corps Reserve. Well, he runs out of time. He runs out of his vacation days, or I'm sorry, his military leave days. And I think we award those by eights, but since he works 12s, is this something you could look into for me? Stacy, I want to make sure we're complying with the law because he's run out of military time, but he's got more days he has to serve. So now he's taking his personal days, not his military days. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm not sure how that's supposed to work, but, and he didn't say anything to me. His supervisor mentioned, well, he's, he's taking his vacation to serve on his military days. Yeah, but his day is 12 instead of eight. You know, one day for him is 12 instead of eight. So he has, when he takes, you know, his days, he earns 12 hours for one day instead of eight for one day.
We'll have to do a conversion.
Yeah, I don't know if we may, I don't know if there's a law and we're not compliant or not. I just thought maybe you could check into that for me. I couldn't answer the question from the supervisor. And I made a post about the incident that happened today. I really can't say very much other than we had a shooting, we had two people injured. We have two in custody. Very proud of the officers. It was about a 20-minute timeframe between when we got the call and when we had people in custody. Well, the officers rendered aid and then Chief Kendrick's folks got there and did more advanced aid. And I think everybody did a great job as far as the, the life-saving efforts. I was out there, little after Chief Kendrick was, and as usual, I think our folks performed very professionally. It's a terrible thing when something like this happens, but what we have to do now is make sure that we do a complete and thorough investigation. So we've called in help from, I think Jefferson County Sheriff's Department sending some assets to us, but also the Metro, the Shelby County Metro Major Crime Task Force has been activated. We're a member of that, so we're bringing together some of the best assets and resources in the county to put on that because, you know, we've seen investigations before where you jump to conclusions and, you know, we don't want to do any of that. We want to be very thorough and complete in the investigation because we want to make sure we put together a case that will stick. And when somebody does something like that in our town, we want to make sure that we hold them accountable. Really not much beyond that right now that I could say about that, that incident. Our officer, Tanya Mims, that was injured, she's still in a lot of pain. I talked to her, I talked to her by text yesterday and we're still looking at probably another surgery down the road. So appreciate everybody who's called and inquired about her as well. She's had a tough time. I think most of you know she's the officer that was injured deploying the stopstick about two years ago and damaged her hand. She still was suffering from that at the time of this occurrence. She, she was still having complications from that incident. So she's had a tough time for young officers, only been with us a few years. So we appreciate you keeping her in your priors as well. That's all I have.
All right.
Sorry about my, I'm getting here late. We were able to, I had a meeting with your broker last week and was able to get some clarification on the CSX drainage agreement. We got red line back over CSX, so hopefully we can, we're hoping, fingers crossed, and maybe we can finally get that to bed and get that agreed and taken care of.
Seth?
What's on the agenda?
You got some to recognize, don't you?
Yes, there's defaults, yes.
Randy?
No, sir.
James, if you've anything?
Anything.
All right, we'll start with Ms. Kay on the council.
Thank you. First question, and I see that Bill is not here, but we need an update on the signage for the restaurant that I used to record door. Any information on that, Bill?
I haven't heard anything on the restroom signage. Was that supposed to be on?
Okay, well, we'll have to hit him up for that information next time. And also, the lighting, we need lighting at the roundabout at Institute 34, some reflectors. I guess Bill would be the person to contact the county.
Yeah, he was supposed to be the one that was to care.
It's just extremely dark and the visibility is dangerous in the core when it rains. We had citizens complaining about the visibility there and I also, I also went there at night. And we need some reflectors, those, what do you call them? They're CLT, put, put some down, the yellow reflectors that reflect the lights on the road. We need some on the ground to, so that, so we can see when we in that area because that's, that's really a dangerous situation. A light in that roundabout would be great, but we just need it lit up. It's, it's terrible at night. And also 31, the bridge 31 going to our ballpark, it's extremely dark. We need those reflectors and things on the road for that area as well.
I know that the permanent striping is something that will, that's coming for that paving project. They had, it looks like they, they have to put the asphalt down and temporary striping it. And then they had to go through a curing time period and then they go back and permanently strip it. So I know that's been a complaint, especially when it's dark and raining, seeing, seeing your lanes and travel lanes and all that in that area. So I would look for that to naturally improve and the permanent striping is done when the state contractor comes back and does it.
And my next question is for Bill as well, so I will have to, to get updates from him on this also at the next meeting. So I just want to wish everyone a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. That's all I have.
Thank you. Mary?
I don't have anything there. I just want to answer what Ms. Kay said. We wish everyone a Merry Christmas and Happy New Year. That's all I have. Thank you.
Chief?
I don't have anything.
Bill?
Yes, thanks, Mr. Mary. I just want to wish everyone a Merry Christmas, Happy New Year, thank their employees for what they've done this entire year, everyone for their hard work that you guys have done and just to let you know how much we truly appreciate what you're doing. And I want to go back to something that Ms. Kay was talking about a little bit earlier, and that's the lighting. I know we had talked about downtown and I think that the power company was supposed to be coming in and changing out some of the lighting to LSE lighting. Can someone count influence and cause, or where are we on that? Because it is extremely, even during the Christmas parade, it's, and I think I went downtown and counted like 12 lights, but then, I mean, just a little distance, that's just out, not that the, you know, it doesn't have a light on the pole, it's just that the pole is there with no light in it. So I know we're waiting on the state to come in and do what they need to do, but in the meantime, can we just get them to put bulbs in the light?
It's the power company, it's not the state that does the lighting, but we have signed the agreements to convert the lighting, I think that was explained last time, that Bill's moved forward and finally back and forth with the power company to convert where they can and upgrade the LED lights will be installed. But we're at the mercy of the power company to kind of do that. They got, you know, that's their fault, their light. So that's all in the, in the works. I don't know how to, I don't know how to expedite or speak the power company up for that job, but I'll stay on it. I know it needs to be done.
But they have already started, have they already started some, some part of the city?
I don't, I don't know if they, I don't know how they'll do it, other than the agreement's been signed, so we've out started.
Okay.
On our, on our behalf, we've started the process.
Okay. Also, wasn't there, we had opened up for the fixing some of the streets. We had talked about how it was going to relook at the way we do the upgrading of the streets for, for pavement to be done.
There was some stuff on the agenda tonight, resurfacing projects that was going on between, it's on a resolution for tonight. There's some key areas that Bill has on the agenda for tonight.
Okay.
For resurfacing.
Yes, okay. That's all I have, John.
Alan?
I don't have anything.
Seth, we've got about, we've got about 20 minutes. Can you handle all of this?
Yeah.
Seth is going to bring our guests to the, to light. These are different groups, different athletes and individuals that have played a part in our parking racks and received some awards this season.
All right, so the group we have coming up here, this is our 2024 midget cheer. What we're recognizing them for is they won the cheer competition this year for a CYFL cheer competition. I believe this is actually the first year we've had a group win it all. Y'all come out on up here, girls. Starting right here. Right side. Side. There you go. There you go. Yeah, hang on just a second. Right there. Just a little bit, just a little bit, just a little bit. There we go. Hey, sit back, feel free, come on in here. Okay? All right. Again, they are midget cheer this year and they won the CYFL cheer competition. Okay, that's, for y'all that don't know, basically it's a cheer competition between our league. I believe there's nine or 10 that they compete against, teams they compete against, and these girls came out. Again, I do believe this is the first time that we've won. This is year number three, I believe, that we started this cheer competition. We are very proud of these girls. We're very thankful for the coaches, okay? If you've never been a coach, to coach 20 girls on one team, okay, it, it takes a lot of patience, a lot of time. We can't possibly thank Ms. Ashley, who's one of the coaches right there, and Ms. Megan, unfortunately her and her daughter, Riley could not be here tonight. They are sick as we have a lot of kids who are sick right now in school. But we want to make sure we recognize each of these girls. So if I would, girls, okay, when I call your names, you can take one step forward, okay? All right. Brittany Russell. All right. One more applause to this end here. Again, Riley Valentine could not be here. Maddie Steinman. All right. Vail Clark.
Vail.
Alani King. Evelyn Wright. Destiny Cox. They're not here, okay? Charlie Ann Goldman. Ryan Leggett. Paige Lee Young. Camara Baez. Kalaya Henderson. Lily Ward. Lila Ward. London Dope. Joel Miller. Presley Dennis. And Bentley M. Finger. Again, let's give these ladies a round of applause for how hard they've been here.
We've got one, we've got one, so we can't do without you there.
Georgia, uh, Coach, we're going to get a picture. Come on, girl. Got to get a picture. Girls, we can't tell you how proud we are that y'all represented Claire in such a wonderful fashion. Thank y'all for doing that. Thank y'all for winning. And again, just when everybody speaks, y'all got to speak very highly. So thank you, girls. Y'all smile for your parents. We'll take a couple of texts, a couple more parents want to come out, take a couple of quick pictures, I'll be fine.
Hey, do we have time for just a quick cheer from them? I mean, something real quick.
We got it, Coach, we actually got something.
That's Ashley.
Five, six, seven, eight. Ready?
Okay. Bingey Little O, go, go. Bingey Little O, go, go. Bingey Little O, go, go.
Again, thank y'all so very much. Want to go back to find your parents. Okay, give them a high five on the way off the job.
High five.
Good job, good job. Good job, good job. Awesome, awesome. Thank y'all. Good job, good job. Good job. Yeah, y'all, parents, if you want to go and leave, you're welcome to leave. If you want to stay, you're welcome to stay. All right. We had two teams that won the championship at a middle school age. Unfortunately, they were unable to make it here. And then we have the fifth grade right here, the 2024 Seattle Seahawks right here, a champion, give them a round of applause. Did y'all win this last year?
We played the championship last year.
Made the championship last year, this year won it all. That's it. Okay, all right, I remember that. All right. So we're very thankful for them. We're thankful for the coaches again. It's hard to find volunteer coaches this year. We can't thank these gentlemen enough for stepping up, for showing leadership to these young boys here, show them the way, to teach them a game that they love and enjoy. So again, coaches, thank y'all very much for being willing to do that, being the ones who are. So gentlemen, when I call your name, if you would please just come forward, just take a step forward. Janen Carney. Sharia Davis. Alex Garner. Caitlin Ho. Eli Horn. RJ House. MJ McCary. PJ Pips. Say Chon Cao. Last but not least, Julius Whitehead. Again, I want to thank our head coaches, Coach Chuck Horn. Coach Johnson Pitt. Coach Tony Carney. Coach Ralph Howes. And last but not least, Coach Julius Whitehead. Again, let's give these young men a wonderful hand. Thanks for everything, Claire, in a wonderful way. Thank you. We need to cheer out y'all too.
Ready, okay.
So here's the kicker, gentlemen, though. Y'all made the championship last year, you won it this year, you got a couple more years you have to win it every year. There's no way else. No push. No push. Y'all look at Miss Horn over there, smile for her. All right, again, thanks, gentlemen. Good job.
See y'all to me, see y'all to three. One, two, three, see y'all.
Minor Cheer, okay? Our minor team, football team, won the whole championship. There's no way that they could do that without these wonderful girls cheering them on, keeping their spirit up. Thank you, y'all, applause there. Hey, y'all realize how big the roller plays, keep the fan in the game, keep them excited, all that. Y'all did an awesome job this year. Thank you so very much, okay? All right, when I say your name, please come forward. Carson Boykin. Lexi Capper. Julia Hernandez. Marius Guinness. Libby Irish Nant. Elena Pierre. Sophia Cunyongas. Genesis Whitehead. And Reagan Watts. Again, thank you to our coach, Ms. Toni Miller with us. Thank you very much. And Randy Oden, he could be here, and Mr. Matthew Dawson. Again, girls, way to represent Claire, loud and proud. We look forward to hearing y'all cheer me anymore, okay? Y'all smile quick for all your parents out here. All right, and now look, see the small number here, there's actually 30 of them, our team. These coaches do, so we have 30 cheerleaders on this team. These coaches handled it with such a wonderful job, and you girls did such a great job in your team play. So again, thank you, girls, and wonderful job. Y'all got a cheer, y'all want to do it for them real quick?
Here we go, Eagles, here we go. Here we go, Eagles, here we go. Here we go, Eagles, here we go. Here we go, Eagles, here we go.
Good job, ladies. All right. 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 Again, I want to thank the coaches again for, for coaching these young men, okay, for modeling them, for training them, for showing them the way. We thank y'all again for volunteering. We hope y'all will continue to do that. Uh, just help continue to bring pride to Claire and continue to grow the program, okay? So thank you, gentlemen, very, very much for that. Uh, there was actually a total of, I believe, about forty boys. So again, many could not make it here tonight. Uh, but we certainly thank the ones that were able to make it. So when I call your names, if you would please, uh, you can step forward and be recognized, okay? Uh, AC Roberts. Uh, Jayden C. Jollin Porter. Desmond Lavelle. Preston Hauser. Calvin Cusar. Braylon Johnson. Gavin Ruffin. Ware Pearl. I got little pants got on there, bro. Aiden Cole. Amari Childers. Elijah Grasher. Weston Haynes. Drew Burks. Kavanaugh Colbert III. Ezra Gilmore. Caleb Simmons. Jordan Hudson. Jackson Taylor. Tyson Towner. Gabriel Comer. Wayland Wark. Mason Cappers. Capers, Farm, Capers, Farm. Jamari Hudson. Kate Petway. Darren Elms. Zachary Bernier. William Capers. Mitchell Atkins. Jameer Hudson. Nasser Heat Barrett. And Hunter Lucas. And let's thank our coaches, Head Coach Jeremy Harrison. And most y'all, if you don't know Coach Jeremy, he's kind of a class clown as well. He's out there, he's playing a little softball game. We play, he's a lot of joy to play with, though. Uh, Fifth and Coach Marlon Burks. Assistant Coach James Cusar. Assistant Coach Joseph Hudson. Coach Eric Johnston. Assistant Coach Eugene Roberts. And our ladies, Mr. Earl Hanes, the other assistant coach. Again, we thank all of y'all for representing Claire with pride, okay, and class. Thank y'all very much. We never really ever get any complaints on any of our teams. We're very thankful for that. Also, with all the parents here, we're thankful for that as well. Our phone doesn't ring very much, so thank you for representing Claire very well. So again, let's give you coaches and gentlemen a hand. All right, hey, back straight, look bulky. Look this way. Y'all smile pretty for your mom. All right, thanks, gentlemen, again, good job.
Eagles on me, Eagles on three. One, two, three, Eagles.
Now that all the excitement of all the little ones are over, I wanted to give you guys some updates again on some of the Main Street events we've been having. So last weekend was another busy weekend on Main Street. Um, bringing people in from out of town and doing things for our city and our community as well. So we started off Friday under the Pavilion with, uh, the Claire Dance Academy, did a Christmas, um, per- performance under the, um, Pavilion. It was great. Um, families packed, sitting in chairs, under blankets, watching the community girls, um, perform and dance and, um, great numbers. And then Saturday, we had two events. We had our Cars and Cones Downtown, um, where local, um, car enthusiasts came, they parked their car, classic cars, it was a cruising, and had some ice cream, and everybody just hung around downtown and walked around. It was really great to see. And then we had our local Alabama celebrities downtown as well. Um, James Pham was downtown, as well as Wes Wyatt. Um, both the local meteorologists finally getting autographs and introducing to people. And then there was pet photos as well on Sunday. So again, a very, very busy weekend. Coming off of the previous weekend where Tyler did a great job setting up, um, the Christmas parade and helping set that, um, video up. So those that were at home, we were able to N C and broadcast, too. Um, so he was sitting next to me in the little tent, setting that up on social media for us. Um, and again, we're going into the end of the year, so we're not done with events. So starting tomorrow night, we have another one. And that is our movie, uh, Under the Pavilion, and that's Santa Claus, starting at six o'clock. Um, there'll be sweet treats and hot cocoa and bring a lawn chair. You guys come out, bring it with your family. It'll be a great time, um, tomorrow night. And then we're ending the year with a bang. So New Year's Eve, um, is our Claire Community New Year's Eve party, and that starts at eight o'clock. We're gonna have food trucks, we're gonna have games, we're gonna have a DJ dancing. Um, at ten o'clock, for those that have an early bedtime, young and older in between, we're gonna do a one drop. So we'll do a little countdown. And again, I've worked with, um, Tyler and Parks, they're gonna help me with that. And we'll do a little countdown, and I invite all of you guys to come out for that. I would love for you guys to help with that countdown. And, um, we have Strangie Pool at the, the one, and the balloons fall, fill the, the Pavilion with over five hundred balloons. Um, just again, a great community. And then we're gonna continue the evening with our dancing and our games and everything. And then at midnight, we have fireworks. TNT has graciously offered, um, us a discount on those fireworks, um, which was very nice of them. So again, we'll be having the firework display at midnight, and then ending the year with a bang, going into the new year. I'd love for you guys all to come out and be present for that and the whole community. Thank you.
Father, we have a motion on the second. All in favor, say aye. Now, need a motion on the approval of the minutes for our last regular meeting and work session on December second.
Amen.
Got a motion on the second. All in favor, say aye. The old business we have on here was ordinance P Z twenty twenty-four dash twelve. It's the Waterford Dunsmore subdivision master plan approval. About that, and, uh, now's the time to take up a vote on that.
Mayor, technically, when, uh, we had, Dunsmore was up last time, we had a full-blown hearing. But unfortunately, since there was a, since there was not a unanimous consent, that hearing now has to be redone, so you have to have another hearing for Dunsmore. Uh, for there to be a vote. But it doesn't have any sort of vote for unanimous consent this time, since the last time was the first hearing of that ordinance. So basically, I think you still have to have a public hearing on Dunsmore, and then you just have to have an up-down vote on that.
Okay. Does anybody here from, speak about the Dunsmore sub, approval of the Dunsmore plan?
You all know who I am. I'm Lydia Godwin, live in, uh, Waterford. I just wanted to point out something that we've all asked over and over about Dunsmore, about the planning and staging, that it says in our requirements that he has to give some kind of overview of what the staging's gonna be. And just saying fifteen years is not an overview. That's kind of very broad. And since it's tied a little bit to Waterford, waiting fifteen years for a second entrance, again, it just sets us back again. We've already waited so long for this. And I know that y'all put some protections in place, but I would hope that y'all would consider that asking some more questions of him, of what's the plan, like, give us some idea of staging, instead of just saying fifteen years. Thank you.
Anybody else?
I'm Mike Phillips. I'm, uh, Allen Foster's son. I'm here to, uh, protest the approval of the master plan. It's still in show, an easement that's acceptable to us. I've shown y'all all that in past. Thanks for your consideration.
Does anybody here from, speak about the Dunsmore, uh, approval of the Dunsmore plan?
You don't know who I am, I'm Lydia Godwin, live in, uh, Waterford. I just wanted to point out something that we've all asked over and over about Dunsmore, about the planning and staging, that it says in our requirements that he has to give some kind of overview of what the staging's gonna be. And just saying fifteen years is not an overview, that's kind of very broad, and since it's tied a little bit to Waterford, waiting fifteen years for a second entrance, again, it just sets us back again, we've already waited so long for this, and I know that y'all put some protections in place, but I would hope that y'all would consider that asking some more questions of him, of what's the plan, like, give us some idea of staging, instead of just saying fifteen years. Thank you.
Anybody else?
I'm Mike Phillips, I'm, uh, Allen Foster's son, I'm here to, uh, protest the approval of the master plan, it's still in show, uh, an easement that's acceptable to us, I've shown y'all all that in the past. Thanks for your consideration.
Anybody else? Any counsel comments?
Mayor, I think we have, I'm sure the attorney that told us about the easement, we have, the city has no...
No, sir, I understand there's a, uh, that this is a matter from the parties, and I think there's two different legal disagreements, but, uh, that would not affect your ability to be able to move forward on that side.
Anybody wanna make a motion to move forward on that?
I make a motion.
Um, I got a motion.
On second.
Got a motion on the second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Posed likewise. Oliver Park walking trail lighting. Did you get that, um, budget number on that, Seth, for the, your route, Wes?
Yes, yes, uh-huh. Robert went back and, uh, really measured and did, did, you know, the full layout, did it, I think it was sixteen, uh, sixteen thousand, what'd he said? The budget for doing that.
And that was something that we did, verify with Kelly that she had some money, um, that we could afford to do that, you know, that Debbie had mentioned that would be a good idea, and I think it would certainly enhance that area, help with safety and increase our, enhance our experience walking up there, so. Now, your motion to move forward of that, it's just a simple change in the budget, basically. Got a motion?
On second.
On the second, all in, in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Limestone Parkway lighting. That's, then you pack it there. Anybody wanna make a motion on that?
I'll make a motion on that.
Okay. Got a motion?
On second.
Motion on the second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Kelly's got budget adjustments on the agenda, and she sent me a text, and if anybody had questions, she'd be glad to ask, anyway, it's, uh, in summary, it's, uh, from Kelly, it's the, the large entries that we normally make at the end of every year, to adjust the books for the journal entries, that's where we get the books ready for the, the requirements for all of it, so, that's something she's been asked to do. Now, your motion to make those budget adjustments?
I made them be approved for the adjustments, Seth requested.
Got a motion? On the second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Police policies, resolution twenty twenty-four dash fifty-seven. I believe I do need unanimous consent on these. I think that's what we could do. Just phases of, of that adoption of those policies, you got them in your packet, I hear any comments on it, concerns, or questions, if not, a big, big unanimous consent.
I want a unanimous consent.
Got a motion? Motion on the second, unanimous consent, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Posed likewise, now I need a motion to adopt.
I'm moving.
Got a motion on the second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Seth brought a nice group of our young folks to us, and some coaches, that's some dedication from those coaches, I'm, I'm just sitting there thinking that it's hard for you, the city, to, to run that type of organization with the numbers we have on volunteers, so, I'm, I'm proud that we have fathers that basically come forward and step up, and mothers that come forward and step up, and good cheerleading and coaching, that's, that's amazing, that in today's town, you see that many volunteers, so that's, that thrills my heart, it's nice to see.
Our program's either good by them or bad by them, thankfully, they're good by them.
Hey, that's, that's, that's an example, and when they go off and compete, that's an example of all of us, you know, we need to, we need to really support them, I, I appreciate them, I appreciate what they do. Good behavior is always of all us. You said we didn't get too many phone calls, so, we've had some crazy ones in the past. Resolution twenty twenty-four dash fifty-eight is the resurfacing project, well, a few roads resurfacing. Neil has, Neil has a letter for you in there. Do you hear a motion, we approve that?
I'll make the motion to approve.
I'll second.
Got a motion on the second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Resolution twenty twenty-four dash fifty-nine is the grant. It's authorized in Shelby County. Um, FY twenty-five application and acceptance for the grant, that's up in your pickleball courts.
So, this, this is the same grant that, uh, uh, that we got last year to actually build a pickleball court. Um, again, uh, this grant would be to build a bathroom by the pickleball court, um, currently we don't have a bathroom that's nearby there, uh, so this will give us one that's there. It also gives us a start of a bathroom if we decide to expand further, there's a park there, so it gives us a bathroom there to start with again. Um, and then, we've also, uh, spoke with them that we're going to, uh, you know, if you guys award this moving forward, you know, when they build this bathroom, it will be set up to where we can come back later and add lights, and it won't cost us additional money to reconfigure the building. Um, we're, we're, we're planning for the future in that, if we ever, you know, decide to come back and put lights on those pickleball courts.
What's this grant will cost us, Seth?
This grant, uh, will cost us, uh, thirty-four thousand, uh, and sixty-seven dollars. Uh, and Shelby County will be giving us eighty-one thousand of, of their, uh, they've created a partner, uh, they will give us eighty-one thousand and seventy-five dollars.
Sounds like a good project to me.
I'll move, go ahead.
Got a motion on the second for this resolution to accept that, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Now, we have Jennifer as a guest, Kensington Place Homeowner Association on West.
Good evening, all.
Good evening.
I'm Jennifer Fumway, HOA president of Kensington Place Calera subdivision, located in Calera, Alabama. Formerly requested acquisition of nineteen point eighty-six acres of land identified as parcel number two-two-eight-three-four-two-zero-zero-one-zero-zero-five-point-zero-zero-one, and parcel number two-two-eight-three-four-two-zero-zero-one-zero-zero-five-point-zero-zero-two. This acquisition would be on behalf of Kensington Place Homeowners Association Incorporated. The intention for this land is to enhance and support our subdivision's amenities and create community spaces that benefit the residents of Kensington Place. It is important to note that there are no plans, nor have there ever been any, to sell this land to any business or entity outside of our HOA. This land will be used solely for community development and to improve the quality of lives of our residents. I respectfully request a vote for the council to approve this acquisition. Texted like this process, I call and request that this transition, transaction be finalized by the end of this year. Our community manager, Nikki Griffin, can facilitate any necessary documentation and work with our HOA attorney to complete the process. And Nikki can be contacted via email or by her phone, her, uh, office number and extension. We sincerely appreciate your time, dedication, and all the hard work you put into addressing the needs of our city. We look forward to collaborating with you to bring this matter to a successful resolution. Thank you for your time to this matter. I was told from the last meeting that all I needed to do was indicate that once we have the land, we're not intend to sell it to anyone, not even the apartments. One of the things that, being in living there, you find out little tidbits of what transpired before. Um, the apartments and the subdivision was supposed to be one sub-community subdivision. The developer, uh, master, uh, uh, Ron Holmes, decided, I guess in twenty-twelve, twenty-thirteen, to sell the apartments. So, it split the apartments and the subdivision. We didn't get any amenities as promised. Going back and looking at the master plan, which I don't have, uh, get, got a copy because it's not, uh, legible, I don't have to go, um, to, um, county and get it. But, uh, even when we signed for our home, they stated that the order and between the developer, we're gonna put amenities within our subdivision. We had two sites. One site was in the back of the subdivision, and one was at the front to the side. If you look at the map, this is an area that was actually supposed to be for additional homes, and they decided not to do that. Right now, in that red area, which is those two parcels, or those two, uh, parcel numbers, that's just wooded area, it's over the, on the other side of, um, Branch Camp Creek, Branch Creek, which comes all the way from down south, all the way up this way, that's pretty much where it ends. So, it's all wooded, and there's the first eight acres that's right behind, right next to some homes, the backyard of those homes are, uh, adjacent to it. It is a great location for us to have our, um, um, uh, our all amenities, everything from our clubhouse to our swimming pool, they decided they want a swimming pool, uh, insurance can cover it, but playground, pavilion, barbecue pit, tennis court, that's why I went through a list of things with homeowners and what they would like to have. And I stated before, I've been in contact with a developer, um, that has stated that, yes, we can put those things there, um, because we're out of the one hundred plan, plot plan, uh, and if you can, if you want to, um, look at that, it is on FEMA, I mean, on USDA, so it's on there, but it is clear, it is actually leveled out already to where you can see where everything would be developed. At this point, this land is only for Kensington Place, we have nothing, we're stagnant right now. We need something else in our, in our subdivision. Waterford has, and at one time, we were trying over to Waterford, there was a pathway, and then we also were using the apartments, amenities, but as I stated before, once they sold the apartments, we no longer had access to the pool, clubhouse. But now, um, the way Waterford stepped up, Waterford has an open playground, clubhouse, a swimming pool, all of those amenities, we would like to have those amenities, and we need that land to be sold.
Well, of course you don't, it's all in the ground, please?
Can you turn the mic on?
Ms., uh, Anor was here, it's, oh, it's not your grave? Is there something wrong with the audio? You hear what happened?
They got the volume up now.
Okay. She, she presented this to us, uh, back in twenty-twenty, and that's when Chris was here, uh, Chris Patrick, and we agreed to give it to her for ten dollars, I remember that, I have it in, in my recording and in my notes, and from twenty, October twenty-twenty. So, basically, this is something that we had already discussed, remember it was coyotes and different things that were in that area that were a nuisance, and the, the land was not workable, whereas, um...
It was discussed at that time, and, and, at, at that time, I, I heard of all the complaints and the, how much of a nuisance the property was, 'cause, you know, it was grass growing up, it was coyotes, it was this and that. Anyway, the idea floated that, that, you know, they would be able to build something themselves out there, build a park, whatever you're gonna build, but I think that it, it's all gonna be summed up by, I guess, covenants that we would place on the passing of this property from us to them, we would...
Let me say this, I want the, the attorney will be handled, I'm just coming...
I'm just talking, let me talk.
Okay.
You get an attorney, your homeowner association, work with our attorney, we put some simple covenants, that you individuals don't receive this, the entity of your homeowner association receives this, never to be sold.
Right.
So, it can be done that simple. Yes, I'm in favor.
Okay.
You know, do you have one of these, or I'll get a better attorney, this, this company if you'd like, but, you know, have, have the attorneys talk about it, and then, when things are ironed out, this council will just make a simple, simple recommendation of, oh, and that can transpire like that, so...
But the thing was, when I asked you before, you were just so willing to give it away because it was such a, uh, a burden on you financially, but then also, we, we wanted to go ahead and make some changes. In order for us, or what I've been told, in order for me to make any adjustments or changes, we have to have the land in the HOA's name, we just can't start doing anything. Now, if you want to do, if you want all of those tidbits to be done, but it still holds back to you all voting on it, 'cause if that's the case, I could ask for your attorney's name and, and gave my attorney, my attorney his information, and, and, 'cause that was my understanding from years ago, was to let him just send in the application for the, uh, the, um, map, for like, you, you buying property, and you all switching it over, so, that was my thought process of how it was supposed to happen, so now you're wanting to do some other stuff. And like I said, I'm not gonna be the one, I'll be the one to sign off on it, because I'm HOA president, but also, it will also be the developers for our agency that we have as management that will be assisting us with this acquisition. So, I don't know if you have...
First thing that takes place is the land acquisition, you have to, you have to iron out the covenants.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
That, that way I can tell this council, and you have the understanding that that will not be sold.
Okay.
And, and that gets taken care of through covenants, for this, this basically, you're creating a contract.
So, that's why, that's why I signed that document like that, that is a, a living document with my signature stating...
I'm not doubting that, there's, but we'll place covenants on it, having recorded, with the real estate transaction.
Okay, but...
You know?
Okay.
That's, that's what's gotta take place.
You're, you're making it like, we're going to sell it to someone, and it's for the subdivision.
And we wanna make sure it stays in the subdivision, while we're all going...
But once it's in the subdivision, that's what's gonna happen, it's gonna get the subdivision's title, the title search, this, this, you know, everything, including the tax ID number, all of that's gonna be included, so, that's what I'm trying to understand, why are you trying to put covenants on a piece of property that the HOA is already gonna have covenants on?
Because the answer is, uh, that's only, the HOA covenants would only apply within the HOA, and the HOA can change those covenants, they can build a amusement park there, if they, I mean, they can change their covenants.
That's right.
Uh, so, this, this will basically give the city the assurances that they need, that it remained within whatever restrictions that the city wanted to, uh, for property, so. No, I believe that Mayor has actually hit it, and now right on the head, that's the proper procedure in order to go forward, but as soon as I have the contacts with your attorney, I'd be happy to work something out quickly, so we can get something in front of the, uh, the council for consideration.
But I, I, I'm just trying to understand, listening...
But I, I'm just trying to understand, listening to you all, when you have these other companies that come in and they bottle back and forth with you about land, and what they can do on their land, and what they can't do, and what you can do and can't tell them what to do, why are you putting this on the HOA? I'm, I'm just curious, at this point. Why are you putting it on, when you look at the land, it's, the water's, all surrounded around it, what can be possibly put there, other than amenities? It's a creek. I've been in contact with Alabama Conservation. We have to do certain things to maintain the creek before, and that's another thing. When they did that and gave you that land, they left concrete in the creek, and they were supposed to get in contact with you all years ago when they came and looked at that, because that was one of the things, on what can we put on this land while that creek was there? Also, when I came and told you all about having all the gas stations, the gas station is gonna be right across the street from us. It's gonna be less than two hundred feet away from that creek, so we have to be stewards of that creek, so there's only so much that can be put there, with that creek going all the way around to the back of the subdivision. So, now, I'm, I'm just saying, at this point, I'm gonna do what you say do, and I'm gonna let my attorney talk to your attorney, and do whatever...
That's all right, I'm not doing that.
I'm just saying.
Make a motion, you all make a motion.